We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Michael Verapapa will lead us.
Please join me in the pledge. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Council roll call, please.
Mayor Moore. Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sustarsid.
Here.
Councilmember Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
I want to do the approval of agenda. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda.
I'd like to pull item E, please. Mayor, if there's no other requests, staff would recommend to pull item D on consent calendar for staff presentation.
Okay.
Just one second. Which one is that?
Caffer.
And I'd also like to call, uh, pull item C. I'll take it back. It won't be an hour.
Okay.
I'd like to read into the records, two communications were received regarding various agenda items that were distributed to City Council and made available to the public.
For presentations, the following presentation has been removed from the agenda as the presenter was unable to attend the meeting. So we will not have the First Street Restaurant Project update.
Do we know if and when it will be rescheduled?
Uh, we're trying to get it on the next agenda. Is that right?
Yes.
And oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire City Council and not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Are there any public comments?
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Hi, my name's Jonathan Waller. A bit on the comprehensive annual financial report, I was just kind of going over some numbers. And although most of those, as the chief has said, he's seen these, and I'm sure most people have seen these and go over them quite a bit, I just wanted to go over them again as we still don't have the 2018 data. But at the beginning of the first page, basically, it just discusses that we have a total liability of $129.7 million. And the market value of our assets as of June 30, 2017, which still don't have data on 2018, was $94,159,000, which put a funded ratio of 72.59%. And that was over five plans because I didn't choose the marine safety, as it only has $16,600, and it seemed a moot point, and it's so, or the fire, because obviously we've shifted that. But then going on to, like, the first page of the safety plan. So when I was looking at the city's CalPERS actuarial report, it's interesting because while we would look at it and think, well, yeah, we've had some good years, but, um, and 72.22% funded ratio is better than CalPERS, funded ratio of 63%, and that's pretty generous. The problem that I have, first of all, just looking at the individual plans of the safety, is you can see from 6/30/2011, it says accrued liabilities, $54.4 million, market value of assets, $42.9 million. And then, as you move down, we now have $73.9 million in liabilities and $53.3 million in the market value of assets. And what I put down below that says annual geometric growth, basically, if you annualized that growth over the six-year period, you would notice that the liabilities have grown by 5 1/4%, which is, to me, kind of a problem, because we have only averaged a return or a performance of 3.68%. So it's kind of like the social security thing all over again. And I see that as pretty much a problem, because if you fast-forward a little bit more years, this gives you a bigger picture of not just the static number of 72, but that it was at 78 at one point, and it's going to continue to go down. And if you go to a more macroeconomic level of looking at this $129.7 million in liabilities at the first page again, the problem is that I've looked at the CDC actuarial data that you can get from them, which I trust them more than anyone here. And basically, they state a specific life expectancy, but not just, oh, you'll live 78 years. That every single year of your life at this point in time, you have a specific life expectancy, which changes every single year that we move forward. And so using those, basically, I've noticed that the only thing that you can basically fudge is the pensions grow by a very specific percentage, which you can look historically. The entrance to that pension, the membership, only grows by a specific percent historically. The only thing that's really up for debate is the actuarial data, which is why, when I ran it based on 2014 actuarial data, I came up with $151 million. The only way these numbers from CalPERS make sense is if you use actuarial data from the '60s to the '70s, which is pretty dangerous, if you ask me, because that's, we're not really getting the whole picture. And to why that matters is it's not just the pensions, but remember the pool fund? When we had money for that, all these other things? These things will continue to crowd out everything else, so it's not just a pension issue, it's a pool fund issue, like the joint land use thing, the sewers, if we want to have the capital improvement project that was supposed to be slated from 2018 to 2023. So I see this as, I understand it's going to be very hard to address with the California rule, but it's just something that I think should be brought to the public's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Corey DeLeon. I'm with the Seal Beach Chamber. Just had a couple quick announcements representing business here in Seal Beach. This Thursday, February 14th, we will be having our monthly networking meeting. Want to invite everybody. It's at 7:30 in the morning, but it, we're really reaching out and trying very hard to provide good content. In this case, it's, we're bringing Joshua Kuntz from McLune and Harbor, and they'll be talking about new tax, the new tax laws and how it applies to small business. We also have, we're very excited to bring to you once again, the sidewalk sale. Sidewalk sale is going to be this weekend, 16th and 17th. There's going to be over 75 establishments, including retailers, restaurants, and bars, all presenting. And to bring life to such an iconic and core element to our community. Our small businesses work very hard, and every time there's a fundraiser here in the community, they're the first ones to give. And we encourage everybody to come and support them as they reduce their prices. Wednesday, February 27th, from 6 to 8, the Seal Beach Chamber Membership Committee is going to be hosting a meet and greet. This particular event is for new and old members. Again, we're reaching out. Some members, believe it or not, don't, can't, and so we're, and network within our community. That event will be held at the Seagarden Center at 707 Electric, where home care assistants will be providing appetizers and refreshment. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to look at a couple things here. Do these principles of how to be civil apply to you as well? Or just to us out here? I want to congratulate Joe Kalmak for the new city council for Old Town, who ran a positive campaign. And congratulations to him. And we still don't have our trees, palm trees trimmed. They're falling everywhere. And you went and hired a city clerk just before the election. Was that to please Jill or all of you to have a city clerk just before the election? And a new city council person coming in? The other things that are bothering me is when we go to talk to the city clerk, there's a camera out there, there's nothing heard. So how does it get back to the person, Jim Brady, that wrote the letter about me? How does it get back to the person that had the video removed for a flyer? I asked for the, I asked for the threat assessment that was done by Jill in 2015 or 16 regarding a person that lives here in Old Town. And we want it. We've asked for it, and we want it. So do I have to go to Sacramento to get it? How do I get it? And where is the paperwork about the City of Seal Beach Police Department? Where they been? Where are they going? How many arrests? Where is that? Why did we have to give them a pay raise and pay another $600,000 coming up this year for a police station up there, a bed and breakfast? We have to pay. Why? Why do we have to pay that much money coming up this year to house the people up there that want to, don't want to be over in the jail in Santa Ana? Can you tell me why? So I want some questions answered about that. And there was an article in the paper, let me see, did I bring it? Oh, here's the other email that came, either from Jill to Patrick, March 13th, 2017, at 4:29 PM, regarding Chief Joe Miller. And it says that all of you got it. Says that all of you got this email. And so. No, there is no lawsuit against that. I know there is no, there's negotiations. So here, the California bosses, which is you, and to the taxpayers that have to pay it, because I asked you, I asked you months ago to come up with a way that they have to pay for their own hashtag B2 fees. They can now add sexual harassment laws to this. The two laws took the January 1st under Fair Employment and Housing Act will make it easier for workers to bring sexual harassment lawsuits against employees before a jury. You had to go through Fair Employment Housing Act. Severe or pervasive harassment legal standard has been removed under the new law, and that changes everything. So here, you haven't done anything but pay you, because you hid it from all the taxpayers. You hid it from all the taxpayers, and here it is. If you want a copy, you better, you better be doing something about that, because it's coming up. So what else do I have on my list? And you have the.
Your time's just about up.
And you have also the email from Jill. Okay, what else do I have? I guess that.
Your time is up.
Your time's up. Your five minutes is up. It's 20, 20 seconds over.
Over? Thank you. I'll be back.
Any other public comments? City attorney report?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
City manager report?
No items tonight, thank you.
Okay. Council comments. Councilmember Sandra Masalavet.
I have nothing. It's been too cold to do much.
Councilmember Mike Verapapa?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Deaton?
Yes, I just want to thank our staff and our community for the wonderful job that they did of cleaning the beach after the huge mess that was made from the rains washing out the rocks and bringing everything down the river. I'd also like to request a future agenda item where staff comes in and presents how they arrange doing the beach cleaning. The community really pulled together and went out and helped clean the beach, and we even had people from up the river come down. I'd also like to ask that it be considered about getting an ambassador. Once again, I know Save Our Beach used to have an ambassador that would go up the river, talk to various council meetings, and to school assemblies. So if we could just take a look at that on a future agenda. Thank you very much. Thanks to the community, and thank you to city staff.
Mayor Protem Sustarsid.
Good evening. I'd just like to announce, I think it's out there in the world, but there's a town hall meeting, a final town hall meeting regarding parking tomorrow night here in council chambers, 6 to 8 PM. So for clarification of the new changes to the municipal code, come and hear what's going on, ask your questions. I attended a tabletop exercise that the Seal Beach Police Department put on, which was a scenario of a major earthquake hitting Seal Beach. And I just wanted to thank the city for inviting me, that all the various departments participated, and it was very interesting and, I think, a worthwhile exercise to imagine all the things going on and what, what we need to do to be prepared for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to echo what Councilmember Deaton said. On Saturday, I attended the beach cleanup organized by the city and Save Our Beach. Despite the rain early on, we had really good turnout from not only Seal Beach residents, but residents as far away as Rancho Cucamonga. So thank you, city staff, Save Our Beach, and all the volunteers who helped out on Saturday. I also want to give special recognition to the Public Works Department. As you can see, that's what it looked like right after the storm. They worked tirelessly on cleaning the beach after the last storm. If you saw the trash on the news, it looked like the beach was quite literally a landfill. There were shopping carts and a layer of trash so thick you could barely make out the sand. But our Public Works team began working right after the storm. In fact, they were on the beach by 4:00 AM bulldozing, raking, and handpicking all the trash, and within a few days, almost all the trash was disappeared. Again, great job, Public Works. As mayor and on behalf of the City Council, thank you very much for all your hard work. And please let me know, that's it?
And, but on the, on the consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by councilmembers.
I'd make a motion to accept the rest of the consent calendar.
Second. Mine doesn't work.
I believe the motion passed 5-0. 5-0. And can we start on item C?
Unless there's any objection of the council, since we have outside representatives here on both items D and E, if we could take those two items and come back to C?
That's fine.
Great, thank you. So item D is the City of Seal Beach Annual Audit Reports for fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. And I'll initially turn this item over to our Finance Director and City Treasurer, Vicky Beetley. And as you can see, we have our auditor here with us tonight as well. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor, and members of the council tonight. We have with us Frances Quo. Frances is a partner with the Poon Group, who handles the annual audit for, excuse me, annual audit and Caffer presentation for the City of Seal Beach. The presentation of the financial information completes the second year of our relationship. And on January 15th, Frances and city staff met with the audit committee to go over to the results that you're going to be seeing this evening. Please ask any questions that you may have along the way, and in fact, I might jump in during the presentation as well. And go ahead, Frances, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the Member of City Council. My name is Frances Quo, and I'm the engagement partner for the audit of the Seal Beach. So tonight, I'm going to present the audit for fiscal year 1718.
Excuse me, could you move your mic up? I think, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, that guy right there? Tell him next. No.
So tonight, I'm going to go over the scope of word for the audit, and then go over some of the required communication as part of the audit responsibilities, and some of the highlight of the financial statement, and then pension, and then the other post employment benefit, and of course, the audit result. So including the scope of word is the audit of the financial statement for fiscal year 1718. And I note that in our agenda packet also included agree-upon procedure for the gain limit for 2018. So as the required communication, it's part of the requirement, as the audit requirement, that we need to communicate with those charter governance about the responsibility. So first is the management's responsibility, because we're here to conduct the audit, so management is responsible to prepare the financial statement, making sure there's a good accounting policy, good internal control over the city's financial reporting process, and making sure that there's no material misstatement of the financial statement amounts, and then making sure that management's there to prevent and detect fraud. As auditor, our responsibility is conduct the audit in accordance with auditing standard, and including the standard is also the auditing, governmental auditing standard, which has another level of the requirement that we need to fulfill in conducting the audit. And we're also here to communicate with those charter governance, so we really enjoy this two-way communication, so we can discuss any audit-related issues or any recommendation that we might come across, come across during the audit. And then as part of the audit process, we need to assess the risk of material misstatement of the financial statement amount. So during that process, we have entrance meeting with the management, talking about different transaction cycles, talking about what are the changing environment of the city, and then go through different transaction cycle, including the financial reporting process. How is a bank reconciliation being done? How is the city collecting revenue? How are the expenditure being approved? And then also capital asset, how are the, what's, who's responsible in maintaining the CIP schedule of the city, all those processes that we do look at during the interim phase of the audit? And then bring us back to the year and phase of the audit, which we go through all the transaction, go through different account to validate the balances. And lastly, during the processes, to determine whether the financial statement are fairly stated. So the next couple slides, I'm going to go over some of the big picture of the city's financial for 2018. So for year ended 2018, the city ended, as a whole, both the governmental activity and the business activity with $168 million of asset, minus the, plus the deferred outflow resources, and minus the liability and deferred inflow resources, come to the net position of $118 million. So the net position is what we call the equity account of the city as a whole. So governmental activity includes all the general fund, the special revenue fund, whether the city has some special revenue, grant revenue, so those are the governmental activity, combined together. And then when you look at the business activity, that's the sewer and the water fund that the city has, those are more like business enterprise, because they are charging a fee for, to the user. So those are the government, those are the business activity of the city. So combined, you see there's $118 million at the end of the year. So included in that is $104 million of investment in capital asset, because those are asset that cannot be, you cannot spend, so those are fiscal asset, capital asset that you have. So about $104 million in net investment in capital asset. And then you have another $4 million in restricted because of external restriction, whether it's grant funding or some other external restriction that has to be used in a certain, for specific purpose. And then the city ended the year with about $10 million of unrestricted net position. And for the government, for the activities, so the governmental activity and the business activity combined has about $43 million of expenses. And for the program revenue are, including the charge of services, could be like charge of fee revenues, or it could be water and sewer fees. And then you also have the operating grant and contribution, so those are related to operating grant from the other granting agency. And then plus the capital grants, so those are grants that can be used for capital projects. Then the city has totaled about 18 million of program revenue. So come to the net cost of service, meaning the expenses minus the revenue, and then you have a, have a $25 million of cost of service. Plus the general revenue, meaning those are the property tax, the sales tax revenue, so those are the general revenue that can be used at the city's discretion. So that's about $25 million in 2018. So at the end of the year, the city had a change in net position of about $700,000.
And before you go on, Frances, I'd like to just jump in. So the shortfall there of about $1.4 million that you see under governmental activities, just reminder that the shortfall in revenue is typically a combination of programs that are supported by fees and cost recovery, and programs that are just supported by the general fund, in some way perhaps being subsidized by the general fund. They have no other kind of revenue offset. And most of the time, these are the decisions that the city makes, that we want to provide the services, but then there's other instances where perhaps we're not charging enough fees to get the full cost recovery. Just wanted to highlight that.
In this particular slide, it's talking about the general fund, because general fund, of course, is the main operating fund of the city. So for the balance sheet of the, you can see the comparison from 17 to 18, the asset's very comparable, about $29 million. And then minus the liability and the deferred inflow of resources, the fund balance, which is also the equity account of the general fund, you have, it went down from $27 million to $25 million in 2018. And then one of the ratio that we typically look at is look at what is the unassigned fund balance in comparison to the expenditure the city has? Because the government, Government Financial Office Association, which is what we call the GFOA, they do have a recommendation on the fund balance, so they wanted to, their best practice recommendation is about two month of reserve, which is roughly about 15% of next year's, of the current year operation, the expenditure. the expenditure. So, for the city, here, you have about 84% of the unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of expenditure at 84% for 2018 and 91% for 2017. So, you're, so you're looking at combining the assigned and unassigned, which are unrestricted fund balance. And for this, this one, this particular slide is talking about the operation for the year. So, 2018 and 2017 has about like 20, increased slightly, a million dollar increase in revenue, and then also some increase in expenditure. And so, the, the general fund has net change in fund balance of 1.4 million, and then for 17 is 1.8 million. So, the, the big decrease in the fund balance is, is related to the other financing sources and uses, which is the transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund to help make for the debt payment, and also transfer to capital projects fund to help support the capital project that the city has.
And I'd also like to jump in on this slide. So, the number in the middle, the positive $84,000 in revenues over expenditures, is a good sign for us, given the council being aware of all the challenges that we had for last year. We were actually able to squeak out just a little bit of money to put back in the surplus. And then, overall, the change in the fund balance negative, that typically happens because we either were planning to spend money from reserves, or we came back to you with some budget amendments, which usually don't have offsetting revenue, and so the council agrees that we can go ahead and spend that money, and we would tap into reserves for those as well.
So, the next couple of slides are about the pension and other post-employment benefit plans. So, this particular one is looking at the miscellaneous plan and the safety plan together. So, I know there are some numbers that are bolded, so which are the, the net pension liability for the miscellaneous plan and the safety plan based on the 7.15% discount rate? And the reason I show those other two discount rate is to show how sensitive net pension liability can change up and down based on the discount rate. So, those discount rate are being determined by CalPERS, so that's what, that's what's how, that's impacting the net pension liability. So, for 2018 financial statement, it's based on measurement day of June 30 of 2017, the combined net pension liability is $36 million. And then at the bottom is the fund status for the miscellaneous plan and the safety plan, about 75% and 72%.
And then, Joe, back up real quick, I'm sorry. So, the last comment I'd like to make in Frances' presentation is just to highlight the numbers in the far right column on that slide, and just to remind you that every decision that CalPERS makes, a lot of them are outside of our control. So, just to highlight this, you know, when CalPERS decides to reduce the discount rate for the city, they make a 1% reduction in the discount rate, and that ultimately costs the city about $18.8 million more. So, just to highlight the sensitivity on decisions that are outside of our control, don't have to do with our payroll, don't have to do with the staff that we have on hand, except we do pay them, but these are the big significant changes that occurred over the last couple of years by CalPERS reducing the discount rate from seven and three quarters all the way down to seven, and now perhaps even considering additional reductions based upon the returns.
And this one is about the net OPEB liability, so OPEB's other post-employment benefit covering the city's retirees' health benefit. So, and also the bolded, bolded fund is the net OPEB liability during, for measurement day of June 30 of 2017. So, you can see that it's about 7, 6.7 million of net OPEB liability for the year ended 2017. At the same thing that there's also a table showing the sensitivity of the net OPEB liability due to the change in the discount rate, and another factor to consider is the change in the healthcare cost trend rate, because the health benefit isn't just based on the discount rate. A lot of, a lot of it is related to how expensive or how cheap it is to get the health insurance. So, I also show the sensitivity table related to healthcare cost trend rate. So, the audit result for 201718 is that we have issued unmodified opinion, so that is the best opinion you can get for the financial statement. So, what that means is financial statement are fairly presented, and the disclosure are, consist, disclosure are probably reflected, and then all the rest, the estimate, the significant estimate, that the management may are reasonable, and then the significant accounting policy have been properly applied. And then some other communications that we don't have any disagreement with management, whether how to treat our certain transaction cycle, or how to contact our audit, so we don't have any disagreement, and then we don't have any significant difficulty in dealing with the audit, and then with no consultation with other accountants as well. So, that conclude my presentation, and thank you for the opportunity to serve as a city. And I'm more than welcome for any question that you may have.
It's pretty comprehensive.
Thank you.
Lots of numbers. Some are good.
Right, I know this is a really big book to digest, so the summary is always good.
Did anything stick out as a problem that you see we could look at?
I think for 1718, it was really a very smooth audit, and I know seven, first year of audit last year was, you know, we have to get used to management, we have to understand the city's operations, a lot of testing, a lot of discussion, but during year 1718, it was a very great audit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's just a receiving file, item, Mayor.
We have a...
You don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion on a receiving file.
Item E?
So, item E is the Orange County Fire Authority's Fourth Amendment to the Joint Powers Authority Agreement, and I want to thank Deputy Chief Lori Zeller for being here tonight to present this item, and then I know Councilmember Deaton, as a member of their Board of Directors, will most likely have some comments as well.
I just really wanted to introduce Lori, now Lori, chief or is it?
Deputy Chief.
It's Deputy Chief.
That's right. Administration and Support Bureau.
Yeah, congratulations. It's really been a joy working with you. The reason I pulled this is I do believe that this snowball project that the OCFA has undertaken is a really great project, and I think it's a model project for all of those trying to work down their unfundeds. So, I really appreciate your being here and tell us how it affects us as a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll give you a quick recap of what the plan is and how it impacts your city. It is an accelerated pension paydown plan. It was adopted by our board in 2013 and has had great success in paying down our pension more rapidly than what would have otherwise been required by the Orange County Employees' Retirement System. So, we've seen our unfunded pension liability trend down from 473 million to 400 million in just a little over five years since the plan's implementation. We've seen the funding status improve from 65% to 79% in that same period of time, far exceeded what we had thought we would have in results in that period of time. We've saved taxpayers and your city budgets $18 million in interest that was earned by the accelerated payments that otherwise would have had to be paid by employer contributions. So, we're currently on track to achieve 85% funding within less than two years, by 2020, and we don't plan to stop there. We'll continue and are on track to achieve 100% funding by 2027. That, that's in spite of negative experience that's occurred. So, for example, we've had years where the system came far under the interest earning assumption, we've had the system reduce the earning assumption to 7%, we've had them adopt generational mortality, which assumes people are going to keep living longer, and so a lot of events that would have otherwise caused that unfunded liability to trend up, we've continued to see ours trend down because of the accelerated pension paydown plan. So, specifically this action before you tonight, what it does is it memorializes this plan into our governing documents. It means that future boards can't easily undo this plan and refocus its attention to other areas of financial need. It ensures that we stay disciplined and on track with this, and the only way to undo it would be to come back in front of all the councils again and seek another JPA amendment in the future, which I can tell you, we certainly have no plans to do. So, we are seeking your approval. If we continue this plan on track, you're going to continue to have interest savings that reduces the long-term employer retirement contributions, which means that we are no longer passing those costs on to you, instead we're earning it through conservative interest earnings. So, with that, we seek your support.
Go ahead.
Thank you again, and I think this idea of memorializing it, we've done it in good faith through all these years, and it does have safety clauses to get, you know, if we need it, but I really like the idea of putting it right into the agreement, and like you said, it's very hard to undo that way, because this is something that we all need. So, I thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
And it has to do with the City of Irvine. Now, I know that part of the rationale for your accelerated action here is to keep Irvine on board. If Irvine does not agree or decides to pull out, how does that affect this agreement?
So, this agreement was originally contemplated because it was requested by Irvine. Like we said, this plan was already in place, we were already moving forward with it, we didn't, we hadn't even thought about memorializing it into the JPA. It was Irvine's request that we take that action that made us think about it. We are here tonight with this as a standalone item, because we ultimately concluded that it's just good public policy to do this, regardless of the fact that it was requested by Irvine. With Irvine in the authority or out of the authority, it's still good for OCFA to pay down its pension liability, so we want to pursue this regardless. We are still able to, maybe at, the acceleration might be a little slower, but the plan allows for that. There's also clauses for fiscal hardship if we need to pause on it for a period of time. So, we're committed to this with or without Irvine, but I can tell you, we're making very good progress in our discussions with Irvine, and we, we see that that's on a good path. We hope to have that resolved in the next couple of months.
I think it's also important to note that Irvine is out right now, they're not in, so they won't be voting on this.
They won't be voting on this?
No.
But yet, they have requested this whole process to become part of the OCFA. And isn't their decision kind of nebulous in terms of whether they're going to buy this plan or not?
They are, because they gave us notice of withdrawal, they're not on our board right now, as Councilman, Councilmember Deaton mentioned. They can't vote on our board to this item. They are still in the Fire Authority being served until 2020, so they are one of our member agencies that it needs to go in front of their council, so they will have an opportunity to vote at that point. This requires two-thirds approval, it needs 16 of the agencies to approve it, not, it does not have to be unanimous, though we are seeking unanimous approval. It's looking like the timing for when this particular item will go in front of the Irvine Council might be closer to when the larger agreement goes in front of them, but like I said, it's not required that they approve it for it to become effective.
Can they come back in?
If they give notice to rescind their withdrawal before June 30 of 2020, they can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I think this has already been being done since 2013.
What is?
This, this snowball plan.
Oh, yes.
The only change in this is that now it's going into the JPIA in writing, that's the only difference.
Well, I think it's better that it's in writing in the JPIA.
Absolutely, but I mean, that's the change, right Lori?
That's right.
Okay, so, and I know that Lori's worked really, really hard with Irvine to work out all of these nuts and bolts, so I thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, please, that we would adopt the change to the JPA with the Orange County Fire Authority, the Joint Powers Authority, to the commitment of the Snowball Accelerated Pension Liability Paydown Plan. And I'd like to authorize the Mayor to execute the amendment.
I'll second it.
Please vote. 5-0.
Hit the other one on the right.
Now, we'll go back to item C.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a second reading adoption of ordinance 1677 that has to do with our wireless telecommunications, and I know, as the council knows, we've had a couple of study sessions on this as well as some pretty lengthy presentations and discussions, so Mayor Protam, Sastarsik, if you just have some comments or questions for staff, we're happy to address it.
Yeah, I pulled this because there's been a lot of, a lot of paper out there, questions from the AT&amp;T Verizon, and also some comments from a resident, so I was just trying, wanted to find out if any, any of that has changed, or as I read through the comments, it sounded like most of it had not changed as we respond to Verizon, or?
Well, as the council knows, there's been a series of changes, a series of comments from AT&amp;T and Verizon and another operator whose name is escaping me right now, but we've had, we've had a number of back and forth communications over a period of several months, and we have adjusted the ordinance provisions as we've gone back and forth and tried to address some of the industry's requests and comments. With regard to those last two documents we received on the day of first reading, there was only one, as I recall, change that we, we made in that period, there was a typographical error that needed to be cleaned up, but what we said at the time was, once we get the ordinance in place, it really is a starting point more than anything else, and we'll keep responding to what staff hears from the industry, as well as what the FCC does, and what may happen in litigation over some of these rules, and, and recognize that this ordinance is getting a regulation in place so that we can deal with the applications that are coming in, and there are applications coming in, meet both the residents' need to be protected aesthetically from these installations as much as possible, as well as the industry's need to further their technologies. And, you know, this technology is just, is just growing and changing as fast as anybody can really respond to it. So, from staff's perspective, it really is a starting point and a, and a place to be able to process the applications that are coming in as we speak. Well, not as I speak tonight, but you know what I mean. We also did receive, I saw in my box today, a letter from a resident about health risks and, and urging public agencies not to take action on ordinances that would permit these types of installations, and there are a few public entities that are, that are, that are holding off on regulation for one reason or another, or litigating. That's not a course of action that I feel is, is one that I can recommend to the City Council based on the city's normal sort of risk tolerance and the state of the law as we, as we see it today. The FCC, both for prior technologies and this current 5G technology going forward, has said very clearly that, that cities may not regulate based on the radio frequencies and the electromagnetic emissions. There's no indication that the FCC is going to change that, or that a court is going to limit the FCC's ability to preempt city's ability to regulate, and so we don't feel that that's a, well, we know that it's, it's a area of regulation that's preempted by federal law, and we don't feel that it's worth the risk of putting the City of Seal Beach out there as a kind of test case on, on those issues. However, we monitor it, all of the litigation very closely, as well as the regulatory activity, and if that issue changes, again, this is a first step, and we will remain flexible to respond either to court cases or to changes from the FCC.
I think I saw monitoring activity was one of the ones, one of the things, there were a few things that they objected. In the future, if, if those are struck down, we're not, that's not a problem for us, we would just have to eliminate it or change it?
We would either, if, if they're, if they're struck down, we would either, depending on, depending on the issue that we're talking about... on, depending on the issue that we're talking about, we would either come back with an amendment to the ordinance to remove that requirement. If it's a, in a lot of cases, the director has the authority to make certain decisions about these applications. So if it's a interpretation kind of a decision, then the director can just simply say, we're not going to impose that kind of condition anymore, then we would respond that way. If in fact, there are, on the other end of the spectrum, if there are victories for cities that say you can regulate in this area, and it's not something that we have in our ordinance, we're going to bring that forward as well, so that the city stays as up to date on these restrictions as we possibly can be.
And some of them, like aesthetics, are kind of subjective, that's just, we just have to try to...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't mean this, I don't mean this to be disrespectful to the industry commenters who submitted comments. But a lot of those comments were, really, if you boil it down, there were comments that said, this would really be a lot better for us if the ordinance said this.
Yeah.
And, and it's not the city's responsibility to make it as, as easy as possible, or as simple as possible for the, the industry. The, the city's obligation is to protect its residents within the confines of what federal law allows. So we, we didn't take a lot of the suggestions that the industry put forward, because they were just either, well, we could see how staff would interpret this in a way that would be bad for us, or it would be better for the industry if this wasn't in there. And that, that's not the legal standard. And so we didn't respond to all of those. We didn't accept all of those.
And there's a deadline in April, and what, what exactly is that the deadline for?
Well, there's, there was a deadline in January that was an implementation deadline. There's another one in April within which the city has to have its regulatory system in place to be able to, excuse me, to start processing within the shot clock periods that are going to be applicable to us now.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I have a question. To Crystal. If the clock doesn't start until April, we're getting applications now?
No, at this time, we haven't received any applications under this new system. We had previously received a conditional use permit application, and it's one of the companies that has been commenting, so they're fully aware that we're going through this process. They were just trying to find another avenue around it. That application wasn't deemed complete at the time that it was submitted, that was returned back to the applicant, and since then, we haven't had a resubmital.
Okay, so we won't be seeing any of these small antennas until after April?
I would imagine, we have already started receiving contacts, people who want to know what this process is going to be. So I imagine when the ordinance is fully implemented, that's when we'll start to see the influx of them. Right now, we have inquiries.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Crystal, are those the same, are those the same people, the inquiries, are they, are they from other companies?
It's the same companies. Usually how these things work is the, the wireless companies use these third parties who, who usually, you know, one company does, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and similar, they work with the cities, and so the third parties are the ones that are, that are contacting us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve second reading adoption of ordinance 1677.
Is there a second? Vote. And there's no public hearing, there's no continued business or new business. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting in honor of retired OCFA Captain Al Bellinger to Monday, February 25, 2019, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Al began his career with the Seal Beach Fire Department on April 1, 1970. He rapidly rose through the ranks, and after only 18 months as a firefighter, he was promoted to engineer. By 1975, he attained the rank of captain. He transitioned into OCFA when Seal Beach joined in 1982, and remained with the department until his retirement on July 20, 2002. Al was a longtime resident of Seal Beach, and was a familiar face and voice around town. Al will be remembered for his quick laugh, generous heart, and love of a good prank. He will be deeply missed by those who knew and loved him. Thank you.